My name is Don Michaelman and I would welcome you to the May 30th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you could check your cellphones and make sure they're on mute or off, would appreciate it there. We're going to have the commission members introduce themselves, and we're going to start with Jim over here. Now, Jim is not sitting separate from us because he didn't vote with us last time. You know, he's not being punished, but it's a medical situation over there and he didn't want to share his germs. Jim?
Good morning, everybody. Glad to see you. Thank we've seen some of your folks at the last meeting and hope none of you get sick from me.
Good morning. It's good to see you all here. I'm Susan Graham.
Good morning. Tom Riley.
This is an open public hearing and is being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is four. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact him at a later date if necessary. Members of the staff will introduce themselves when they come up or speak on that part. Tammy?
Minutes.
Yeah, we have some.
Yeah.
Are there any corrections to the minutes for the May 9th, 2024 meeting? If no correction, is there a motion concerning the minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve at a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sarah, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Michaelman.
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley.
Approved.
Member Graham.
Approve.
And Member Klosuski.
Approve.
Passes 4-0.
Now Tammy?
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner. So we have two requests before you today. One of them you already heard at your last meeting was the rezoning, but we add the general, the minor general plan amendment to this. So this is a rezoning area, is .6 acre portion of a 3.279 acre project area. The current zoning of the three parcels in question are SF9. They were historically used as a parking area through its historical uses. The proposed zoning is multifamily high density, which matches the surrounding zoning to the north, south, and west. Sorry. The proposed use for the overall project is 90 apartment units, and this is considered an infill development. And also part of the request is a minor general plan amendment from low density, low to medium density to high, medium-high density to match the surrounding. So this does have a lot of historical uses of the building. It has been vacant since September of 2012. That's when Yopai County Development Services moved out of that building, and then it was pretty much vacant or not used since about October of 2012. We have seen a lot of proposals for this built property. Some of them have tried to integrate the existing building to try to save it, but once they see the environmental report and then actually look at the building, because it's not been maintained since 2012, there's been no way of keeping the building or keeping it intact. So we wanted to throw out that, that there had been other proposals that have tried to save the building. We also had the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office people up this year. They were doing a tour around Prescott, getting ready for a conference they're having here, and they did go up to this building to look at it, and they didn't, they said, yeah, it's a really interesting building, but they don't see the historical where it wouldn't qualify to be on the register. So. So here's the imagery of the property, the red outline around the whole project area. Then we have the three parcels over the parking area across the street from the building. Those are the three parcels that are under consideration today to be rezoned. As we said, this, these parcels are zoned SF9. So historically, it's always been used for public services, so it's been, the use has been kind of exempt from zoning. So in this property, these, this area has historically always been used as a parking area, which is allowed in a single family. So when they came through and did the rezonings back in 2003, when they updated our land development code, these parcels remained SF9 because they were used as a parking area. There wasn't a need to rezone them or change the zoning, and it's historically carried over that way. So, but now that we have a new owner of the property and they'd like to try to rezone these properties to be able to use it as part of their overall project. Again, here's a closer up view of that. So here's the site plan that's being proposed, and the red boxes around the area that's being proposed to rezone. So the idea is to kind of spread the buildings out so that it's, it's not just one group of buildings and a big parking lot. They're just trying to spread it out. And this is a preliminary site plan based on what the outcome is and when they start doing their engineering. But this is the concept that they are proposing for, that will show for the 90 proposed units. Even if this area is not rezoned, that they still have the density allowance for the 90 units, they would just have to move those two buildings out of that area and reconfigure the parcel, and they could use it for parking. And this is the general plan land use map. This area was maintained as the low to medium density residential. And back in 2003 and with the 2015 general plan, they were looking at existing zoning in these areas, and since this had the single family, it kept with that low to medium density residential. But as you can see to the north and west and south, that it meets the medium, the high-density residential, since those are areas, there's a multifamily. So they're wanting to amend land use map to match what's surrounding them. Here's a picture of the area in question. Like I said, it's a, it was used for the employee parking area when the county was using it. Like I said, this property has been vacant since 2012, and there's been no, there was a movie, I guess, that was filmed there, but otherwise, the county's just been trying to keep it intact as best they could when they owned it.
It was an horror movie, wasn't it?
I believe so. The ghosts in there were probably very happy about that, to have some company. But it is a building you don't want to be in after dark, trust me, from experience. But they do have a demo permit, and they've had it since November of last year, which does not require public input, anybody comply for a demo permit on their property. Issues for consideration for rezoning requests, you know, consistency with the general plan and other adopted plans, compatibility with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby properties, suitability for uses permitted, suitability of the subject property for the uses permitted by the existing district, and availability of sewer water and storm water. I did talk to the applicants after the meet, last meeting, and they have already did some analysis of the water and the wastewater in the streets in the bright area, and they are not going to have to upgrade the lines in the area that they, they feel that there's adequate pressure. But that'll be tested more as they move forward with their plans. But there were some questions about whether they would have to tear up the road. If they did, then there's a new road they'll go in because it's pretty beat up right now the roads around that area, so it could help. Staff from various departments did review this application, even though it's conceptual, and that as we, if the rezoning is approved, then we'll get their engineering plans and more further plans to, for them to detail examination, and we'll get the TIA traffic impact analysis and such at that time. This property is bound by residential and office type uses in the area. Usually when you see commercial, mostly a commercial downtown, usually you have the commercial areas, then you see multifamily and then single family. You have a hierarchy of zoning usually you see with towns. So you have commercial, which you see on Monizuma, then multifamily, and then single family later out. So this does match that consistency that you usually see with zoning hierarchy. Compliance with the general plan, this is requiring a minor general plan amendment from, excuse me, low to medium residential density to medium-high to match the surrounding area. So we feel that it is consistent with the general plan. This was just an outlining area that they didn't catch when we did the maps for the general plan. So we have two recommended actions. First would be to move or recommend approval of the general plan amendment, and then approval of the rezoning if that's what you choose to do. That concludes my presentation. They do have other meetings after, you know, after this, and they go to water issues for the water, and then all those, these two applications and water will go to council together. So that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Would the applicant want to make a comment?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Johnny Stewart. I work for the architecture firm that designed this site layout, and I'm here representing the owner as well. Again, Tammy did a very fantastic job of explaining our project here. I just want to be very clear about what this rezoning is for. It's an attempt to better facilitate this apartment complex into the community. We already have the ability for 90 units. That's not what we're asking for. What we'd like to do is spread the development out and lower the building heights. We could go to three stories and keep that area a parking lot, as Tammy said. What we'd like to do is do two-story units. That would be more cogent with the surrounding area. There's one and two-story, single-family homes and multifamily projects surrounding this area. I went through, and there were some comments about the other multifamily projects here that were kind of being stated as low density, but I went through and there's eight multifamily projects that are within the surrounding two blocks of this area, and the average density of the apartment complexes that are in this area are actually 24 units per acre. These are three and four and eight unit apartment complexes, but they're on .178 acre lots. So ours seems out of scale because we have so much more land than the rest of these apartment complexes. So, but we are, we do fit in well with the neighborhood as far as the average density goes and as far as the building heights as well. So I just wanted to make that point abundantly clear as well. And then, you know, Tammy talked about the water and sewer. We do have adequate water and sewer there, above and beyond what the, what the normal building would demand would be the firewater for the hydrants and the sprinklers, and we've already done a hydrant flow test, and we have more than enough water pressure to accommodate all of that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Tom?
Hi there. Couple of things that have come up in the past is going to be continued access to the two properties that are to the south for vehicular access, and also social trails that have been cutting through this property for, you know, a millennia, if you talk to the people who use them. Then that would, are they going to be maintained? Are they going to be continued? Could you speak to that?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that, that question. So we did receive that comment from city staff, from the, from the surrounding neighbors. So a couple of things here, there's kind of two sides to this, and one is the idea that we do not abandon, or the city does not abandon Marina Street, and that access is kept by the city. So if that access is kept, that's kind of a moot point, that will, that'll remain Marina Street. The other one is if the city does abandon Marina Street and we incorporate that, the only way that that would work is if we grant an access easement all the way through the property. So that would remain intact for those people that are living behind that property. And then I did talk to, we've talked internally, and we know that there's a trail that comes down from the Summit Point property. We would be absolutely happy to actually connect to that trail through our property and then let that come down through, that, that, that straightaway would, would still remain there, that where Marina Street is, that's where our access easement would be. And if you see that down at the very, it's the southwest corner of the property, you see a kind of a diagonal line going through the trees there, that's where that trail is, I believe, and we would, we would absolutely love to connect to that trail to enable the residents that go down there to continue to access through Marina Street. The second point I'd like to make about that abandonment is, right now Marina Street is 25 feet wide. If the city, and again, this is not a, a part of this rezone discussion, but if the city did abandon Marina Street, based on the requirements from the fire department, which we've gone through and, and done outside of this meeting, we would actually increase that to 36 feet so that we could park on either side of the street. So the Marina Street access would actually be greater than it is currently.
Thank you.
Other questions? I believe at our last meeting, there was a comment made about maybe having a meeting with the public around there to answer questions, show maybe a little more details of what it's going to be. Did that occur? Are you still planning to do that?
So we did not conduct a formal meeting with the public, but we did reach out to several specific residents and meet one-on-one privately, not privately, but we met one-on-one with them via phone and email.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I apologize. I'd like to make one other point. There was a, some talk about open space requirements. Based on the zoning and the lot sizes that we have, we, we would be required to have .037 acres of open space. Right now, we're looking at more than, between a half acre and three quarters of an acre of open space. It's not abundantly clear on our site plan, and I apologize for that, but we will exceed the open space requirement on our site plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission.
Sarah, do we have members of the public who would like to speak?
You sure do. The first one is Paul Landis.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the council. My name is Paul Landis. I live at 338 Outlook Circle, which happens to share a property line on the southeast corner with the proposed project. 90 doors, that's the basic metric of how this development gets penciled out. That's how they look at it. And maybe it's multiple two-story buildings or fewer three-story buildings, but 90 doors is the mindset that's already been baked into this process. That certainly carries the potential for 180 cars, multiple dumpsters, and in the plan that we've seen thus far, no green space, just asphalt and buildings. Large apartment complexes are simply long-term cash flow machines for the developer. They don't create any sense of community. There's no individual pride of ownership, like with condominiums or townhomes as an example. And while there may be rules in an apartment, there's no real governance or oversight on renters. Basically, if they break the rules, they get kicked out, they find another renter. Apartments arguably get used harder and deteriorate faster than any other housing option. It's 90 doors on 3.2 acres in the heart of Prescott, just blocks from some of the most iconic historical homes, just further down Marina Street. And once built, it doesn't go away. The criteria for best and highest use of this downtown neighborhood property shouldn't be how many doors they can cram into a small space. It should be viewed as how it will integrate into the aesthetic of the downtown community for the next 40 to 50 years. And so I would respectfully request this commission to raise the bar on what's going to be a legacy project on South Marina Street and create equity opportunities for owner-occupied housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Veronica Grace?
Decorum in this meeting. There'll be no outbursts of applause, no shouting or anything, and if that occurs, you may be asked to leave. Does everybody understand? Okay.
Veronica Grace?
Good morning. My name is Veronica Grace. I live at 536 South Marina. My partner, Dale Brown, and I also own the property at 534 South Marina, and between us, we own four other properties in downtown Prescott. We both really value downtowns. I think that Prescott is very unique all across America. I think Prescott is very unique. I think that we in particular love the energy of the downtown. We love the vibrancy and the, the action of downtown. I am for higher density. I prefer that over urban sprawl. I like the idea of this property being developed. I also really strongly believe in property owner rights, and I respect the owners of this property and their right to do whatever is in our code, and that's where we are today, right? I will highlight with that that I think that within the city of Prescott and specifically within the downtown, our historic nature and character of our downtown is what draws people here. It drives a lot of our economy. It absolutely is the reason that people come to Prescott. People do not come to Prescott because it's filled with mediocre apartment blocks. They come here because of the character that has been created here over time. And I believe that this project, almost three and a quarter acres within half a block of our courthouse, of our city square, the heart of our downtown, we should all be concerned about what this becomes, because this is a big deal. And whilst we look at our general plan and say, well, this is just a minor amendment because it's not 160 acres, this is a really big deal to the heart of Prescott. So I think we should all care. One thing that came up in the last meeting is, and it came up lightly today, is the history of this property. And whilst the history is not about what it is today, I'd like to actually talk a little bit more about that, because I met with Tammy, and she shared with me that original plating of this property, of this chunk of land, looked very much like those three small squares. It was a total of 16 .2 acre lots, designed just like those three squares that we're talking about today. So the original plating, the original design, and going back to 1938 and even before that, was that all of this property would be designed much like the rest of its surroundings, of .2 acre lots, approximate. When we apply MFH to a .2 acre lot, we get approximately two units per lot for a total of 32. That is very different than what we're talking about today, and yet that is actually really consistent with the surroundings. And so one of the things that I struggle with is the way that we as a city are approaching this property as a continuous chunk of property. I realize that over time, some of these lots have been consolidated into different parcels, and that is now, they are parcels. However, they are still, at the very least, separate parcels, and yet we are calculating density on the basis of this being one continuous plot of land. It's clearly not. Not only is it separate parcels, but there's also a street bisecting this property. So whilst we treat it maybe as a same, as a single project, it's not one continuous piece of property. And if we look at it differently, if we look at two separate chunks of parcels, at the very least, an east side and a west side of Marina, if we apply MFH, we actually get more like 70 units. Even more so, if we look at it very separately as individual parcels as a whole, which, again, seems like this foregone conclusion that we just replat and chunk everything together, but looking at separate parcels, we also get more around that 70 figure of number of units, which feels still very high for this, I think for this property, but more palatable than 90. And so I'd like to question the way that we are actually applying the calculation to this property, considering that it's not one continuous chunk of land. I'd also like to propose that we contemplate whether a replat is a foregone conclusion, that it's just accepted that we would do that in this location. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the rezone itself. I, again, support this project, and I'm not specifically opposed to the rezone of these three parcels. However, I think it's worth stepping back and actually recognizing the gift that we, the city of Prescott, are about to give this developer in this rezone. There is a value here that we, it seems like it's a foregone conclusion, it seems like it's just going to happen, and yet let's talk about these three specific lots, the total .74 of an acre. Currently, our owners would be allowed one unit per lot, right? So three units, basically. When we rezone these three units, they are now collectively allowed to have 20 units, a delta of 17 units. I realize there are other ways you could look at this, but for simple math, 17 units. As a owner of properties in downtown Prescott, I can tell you that easily, all day long, a two-bedroom unit, we can see anywhere between $1,500 to $2,500 a month for a nice unit in downtown Prescott right now. So if I look at, let's just say ballpark, I realize it's a combo of one and two-bedroom units, let's say it's $1,500 to $2,000 a month. What we are gifting this owner is $306,000 to $510,000 per year. dollars per year into perpetuity. This is not a one-time gift. This is an annual gift that we, the city of Prescott, are saying, it's fine, here, you can have this. And my ask is, for that gift, what comes back to our community? What is it that we see back? I realize that we get some, some revenue on rental, rental tax, that kind of thing, but the size of this gift, in my mind, is so large that I would like to see some considerable consultation with our community. And I would like to see the city brokering that. I would like to see the city leaning in a little bit more and helping out to try to recognize that we are giving you this large gift, and we, as a community, would like something in return. I've learned over time to try to be a little bit less subtle and more direct, so now I'm going to tell you exactly what I would like to see happen. I would like to see, in some of this, in consultation with some of my neighbors, I'd like to see the hillside east of Marina maintained. So a big chunk of that green space that we see in the southeast side of that parcel, that is a significant hillside. It has a lot of impact to all of the neighbors that are here today and some who are not. And I'd like to see that hillside maintained, not only because I worry about the safety of a major water event, of what will happen with runoff, of what will happen to my downhill properties, but also because this is, this is a buffer in our urban development. It is a sense of, a space of beauty and wildlife, and it creates a lot of what makes Prescott unique, in my mind. I'd also like to see the Marina Street Hill maintained, so that road that goes up to our house, I'd like to see that street maintained as it is. I would like that we ask these developers to adhere to the suggestions around the site plan that are in the code. And I see them as just suggestions. There's not a lot of prescriptive content in our code. But I'd like, for example, no street parking that's allocated on the roadway. And that is in contrast to what I just heard, but I'd like to see no street parking that's allocated for those apartments. I'd like it to feel like a neighborhood. It is a neighborhood right now. I'd like it to feel like a neighborhood. When I look at that site plan, I recognize that I'm going to be driving through a parking lot every time I come and go from my home. That's what that site plan looks like to me, with trash dumpsters and recycling, sitting at the curb in large facilities. I'd like to ask that we follow our site plan recommendations, which does not allow those things. And finally, I'd like to contemplate, I'd like to contemplate that we reduce the number of units by looking at our calculation process a little bit differently. This is not a continuous parcel of land. So in closing, I will just say, I feel some disappointment and sadness that our city is not leaning in more to this. I've seen other communities really have a lot of engagement around something that is as significant like this, relative to its location and proximity to the core of our downtown. I feel, from my interactions thus far, that everyone in the city is doing their job and they're checking the boxes, but nobody's actually saying, let's go above and beyond here. It's more of a, I'm doing my job. And I appreciate that, I respect that, but this is important. I ask that the city engage with the community, force the developer to have a community meeting, force some discussion, and perhaps look for some opportunities to collaborate on something that can be additive to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak. Appreciate your time today. As Veronica said, she and I-
Sir, excuse me for interrupting. We need to have your address, too.
Daryl Brown, 536 South Marina Street. Thank you. So I have a few things to say. Veronica and I have talked about this at length, and as it turns out, she's the brains of the operation, so I agree with what she said. But I did want to reiterate a few things. One, Prescott is very special. We love it here, and the downtown in general, we fell in love with walking through the neighborhoods, and it's why we're here. And I wanted to extend a thank you to you and your predecessors for keeping that and making that happen over time. It's, it's really a special place to live, so thank you. I do want to reiterate that this zoning change is no small gift. There is the unit expansion, but also, if you do look at the site, that is the most buildable area on the site. So in general, those three lots are all flat, easy access, definitely would be the least expensive way to develop this property. So in changing the density, it is dramatically dropping the cost of this development from a purely building standpoint as well. Otherwise, you've got to go up that hill, which is non-trivial if you're going to put all your lots up there. Looking at this site plan, as Veronica said, we're going to be driving through this or walking through, and it feels more like a strip mall than a neighborhood to me. So it is big oceans of parking with dumpsters, et cetera, on the street, parking right off the street. None of these, as I understand it, I am super not an expert, but our building code suggestions prohibit those. They suggest you do not do, you do not put dumpsters on the street. You do not park directly off the street. And so it, it may be that this is a preliminary site plan, and those things are not going to happen, but this is all we have to go on, and it seems like the least beautiful option and the least neighborhood-feeling option. So if we are going to gift this good building site, the expansion of units, it would be wonderful and reasonable to expect something in exchange for that. So if the developer would be interested in following all of the suggestions, basically what the city of Prescott has defined as best practices for development, that seems quite reasonable to me. If they would follow those, it seems like a very reasonable gift to, to do this rezoning, approve it, and incentivize them to make it as beautiful as possible for the residents around. So looking at the income potential change and the cost of building, I do think some, some expectation of recompense to the neighborhood is reasonable. I thank you for your time and appreciate everything you've done. Cheers.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm Kathleen Clark. I live at 2816 Nightstar Circle, six thousand feet at the top of the hill in the ranch. And I'm a loyal, taxpaying citizen of Prescott, Arizona.
Could you speak a little more into the mic, please?
Okay. First of all, I want to bring up the point that many things that have happened since I've been here, and it's been about seven years, are legal, but they're not right. This is a community that has a great deal of pride in its history and its atmosphere of a small town, a place of history, a place of culture, a beautiful place to live. I escaped from a place that was very much like this, almost identical, and it was ruined by the kinds of things that are happening now. I don't want to see this happen again in my lifetime, where I chose to live in a beautiful desert town. Many people who are here have lived here all their lives and treasure the culture and the atmosphere of this town. And many other people have been moving here because they chose this lifestyle, this town, this way of living. And we are losing it as fast as we can turn around. Why are the developers privileged to have all of a favoritism over the taxpayers and citizens of this county? We need to look at who we are and what we want to be in the future and save it for the children and the people who come after us. And if we just allow everything that we have here to be paved over and built over, we have lost everything we stand for. The city does not have to approve the rezoning. The land was bought with building restrictions. They knew what they were buying. It does not meet all of the requirements. That's the truth. And I don't think, also, the policy this town has on the school boards and the city council, et cetera, they decide everything behind closed doors in executive session. They already have their decision made before they come before the public. And I hope that you people will start looking at having meetings where people can come like this and talk about things before the decision has been made. And I pray that you people have not made the decision ahead of us and decided this on your own without regard for the people who live here. Anyhow, thank you very much. Please think and pray about this before you vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Joe Bagley. I own property and reside on the 400 block of South Marina, four houses away from the proposed ninety-unit apartment complex. I am still totally against this project for a number of reasons. On May ninth, I spoke to you and told you that when I moved here, I bought my home. I made it to be as maintenance-free as possible. I was able to do this because of my past experience in commercial property management and building maintenance, knowing all along that this would be my last move and I would be comfortable living out my retirement in this quiet part of town. Then I received this letter from the city about the project for the very first time, and yes, I felt I was punched in the gut. Why do you have to move and approve this project as soon as possible without local neighborhood and citizens' input? By mailing a public notice, like the one I received from the community planner, to property owners anywhere from two hundred to five hundred feet from the project, only encompasses an extremely small proportion of owners that are going to be affected. There was no sign that a driver driving by could read to see the proposal project with public notice. There was a very small sign printed and put on a piece of cardboard covered with clear plastic on a small stick that you had to pull over and read or get out of your car to see what it said. I saw that sign. This is wrong. This should have been published for all citizens that will be affected by this project and give them the opportunity to voice their opinion. I along, I alone, I alone with others have been told that we have no rights, that the new owner can do what they want because of the zoning. Maybe so, but where is the planning part of planning and zoning to make sure this works for the existing community as well? There has been zero outreach. I don't see it, nor do I feel that the community planner cares about our community, only the rights of the future developers. This proposed location is in the very heart of historic Prescott. I hope you all had a chance to drive the streets to see where this is being located. With many homes that are over a hundred years old, including mine, this massive, massive project in this quiet part of town is definitely not a good fit. Lots of traffic and noise, twenty-four-seven with ninety units. It really needs to be located outside of the downtown city proper, and I do have to disagree with the architect. This does not fit in with the neighborhood. Parking will be a problem for sure. Just take a look at the existing apartments all along, all along the area. When the existing parking lots are full with tenants and their guests are parking in the street and up, up and down the entire area day and night, it seems that developers just want to make sure that they put in the minimum amount of parking spaces required when building. Our infrastructure, like our home, the city's infrastructure, if I'm not mistaken, is of the same age, as far as I know, a hundred years plus or minus. What additional wear and tear will likely occur, and what preventive maintenance upgrades will be needed to our sanitary sewers, storm drainage, water supply, and our streets, et cetera? Are the citizens of Prescott going to have to pay for these upgrades, or will YH Development Properties LLC, if they proceed? Has there been a traffic study on this project to determine if it's feasible that this project will work in this location? This was asked last meeting, but no answer was given. I hope it was done. There's going to be a whole lot of cars and trucks going up on, up and down our quiet streets. I would like to know and see the results of the study, if possible. There is also the issue of the city giving the go-ahead for demolishing of the existing historic buildings. I know we have been told that there are, they are beyond repair, but by who? I have seen properties refurbished come back to life by people that I know, that know what they're doing. Was this go-ahead given without really looking to the possibility of historic value of the property? I just don't know, and do you? In closing, I need to stress that before any approval is given, that you please publish this project in a way that you did for the recent Whiskey Row Hotel and the old City Hall proposals. I saw it in print, and I received letters from the city. More local citizens were aware and had the opportunity to voice their opinion. I think this project deserves the same. It's just not a house being built. Thank you for what you're doing and this opportunity to let me speak again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm Rita Bagley, 436 South Marina Street. Just this morning, I was thinking, why doesn't the developer build the number of beautiful single-family homes that are allowed on that said parcel that they want to have rezoned? Oh, it's because nobody wants a single-family home next to ninety apartments. Well, neither do we in this community. Yesterday, I looked up, I looked at your paperwork, and yesterday I saw your community development, planning, and zoning. So I kind of researched a little, what does that mean? And some of the things that bubbled up to the top in description is, it's a process where community members take collective action on issues that are important to them. Planning and zoning, one of the top three goals of zoning is the following: property values are protected. I'd like to repeat that. One of the top three goals of zoning is the following: property values are protected. I don't see that happening in this particular situation with this project. Some of the things that were brought up, traffic is a big concern, increased pollution, a lack of water, they have not been addressed. The role of local planning, planning is about getting the right things built in the right It's about spaces around buildings. We're going to be losing native habitat. There's a deer path that comes directly through there, I don't know whereabouts, but the deer, the javelinas, ravens, and so much more wildlife can be observed, viewed, and enjoyed in our community, right in that neighborhood. I'm interested to see a show of hands in this room of who would love to have ninety apartments built on three acres with only one way in and one way out, with over several hundred people within a short walking distance of their family home? Anyone? I don't think so. Since this property had been sold, we have found the new property owners have very little respect for the immediate neighbors in this old, established neighborhood of ours. There were many, many weeks that were spent, that they had spent removing asbestos off the existing buildings. No respectful notice to the surrounding population to let us know, to ask if we would consider or would want to choose to keep our doors and windows closed during this period or even shelter indoors. We are an elderly- We are an elderly population. As of today, there are still piles of debris stacked in front of the building. Well, too bad if it appears that we do not care about the neighborhood. It's there. It's too bad. You have to look at it. The weeds on the LaRue side of the property used to be cut back regularly by the former owners. I do not believe that that has occurred, not even once, with these new owners. Too bad to anyone passing by. We really do not care about you, is what says to us. At the last meeting, I don't believe I misunderstood, but questions were asked by the panel regarding the 20 senior apartments that are part of this project. It was asked whether they will be receiving lower rent, if there would be handicap access for them, or what were the considerations for those 20 senior apartments? Well, none of that really applies. Apparently, having this designation of senior apartments allows for less parking spaces, and there are no guarantees to seniors, is what I understood was being said. Also, as has been mentioned, the entire project will have no landscaping, it's all cement, asphalt buildings. And with the multitude of children and dogs that are expected to be living on this property, that very short strip of now uncut weeds on LaRue Street will be used for that purpose. Finally, as this project has been held as a big secret from the community, some of us longtime, long-term homeowners and stakeholders of the community went to the planning department to get more insight into this proposal. We were told that the non-local property owners of this project have more rights than the surrounding homeowners. After these builders come and go and remain long after while, the misguided results of this project stay behind. We were told existing homeowners have no rights here. It's written that there's no fiscal impact mentioned on this agenda, and I think that's a misnomer. Please hold off on any decision at this time rather than impact the entire community, including our historic downtown area, which will be in uncontrollable gridlock once this takes place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alvin Burke.
Good morning. I have to apologize, I'm losing my voice, so bear with me. Thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts this morning.
Excuse me, sir. We need your address, too. Sorry.
My name is Alvin Burke, and I reside at 559 Wilderness Point. I'm speaking on behalf of both my wife, Marty Verrier, and myself. As stated in the last meeting, we are not opposed to the development of the site in question. However, we are opposed to a development that will adversely change the character and the quality of life for the surrounding neighborhood. At this time, there are over 100 single-family homes north and south of Senator Highway. These families are able to traverse the Summit Point Community maintained path down and through South Marina onto the Downtown Plaza, City Library, and surrounding businesses. Will this path be accessible to residents? At the same time, the residents of the immediate area adjacent to the site consist primarily of older, single-family dwellings and low-density apartment structures typically containing four to six units. The only commercial establishment is a medical clinic directly behind the site in question. So this is primarily a residential area. Residents along Marina, LaRue, and Cortez live in an older, lower-to-middle-income established neighborhood, with many streets not having sidewalks and many residents having to currently park on the street or on their lots in front of their properties. At the last meeting, Michael Taylor, the architect for the developer, and I am sorry the developer is not here today, cited the apartment complex they designed off Iron Springs as an example of the quality of the structures envisioned. We looked at that complex. This is a smaller development in an isolated area surrounded only by existing boulders and off a major street. There are no residents adjacent to that development. It's really isolated. The apartment buildings are two-story, very modern in design and clean, but very stark and minimalist, with an appearance of an institution. Parking is open, uncovered, and there is limited landscaping, if any. Replicating this design on South Marina would be like hanging a Picasso painting in a room of 16th-century Renaissance masters. Unique, but not fitting in with the current character of the existing neighborhood. While we do not object to the proposed rezoning, our serious concerns regarding the development are as follows and have been stated by prior residents. Number one, 90 apartments with even 140 parking spaces on-site will necessitate renters and visitors having to park additional vehicles off-site on the surrounding streets. This will have an adverse effect on the residents in close proximity to the proposed development. What design options are available? Will the city build sidewalks on streets close to the site to increase orderly off-site parking? Number two, what will the additional noise level of possibly 90-plus renters coming and going during the day, people on apartment decks entertaining, TV and music, cars being started, alarms going off? Is 90 apartments a realistic number considering the above effects on the direct community? Number three, if the rezoning is approved, will the developer guarantee that the buildings will not exceed two stories? We haven't heard that from the developer. Will onsite parking be attractive canopy roofing or unsightly open air? Number four, will South Marina, where the site is, be kept open with public sidewalks added, allowing off-site residents to drive and walk safely through the development in both north and south directions? Number five, will the developer be amenable to meeting with local residents? You heard today that four residents possibly were contacted. One was only contacted and discussed through emails. We live right adjacent to that property. We were here at the last meeting. The architect commented that the developer would be amenable to meeting with us. No contact has been made with us. Will the developer be amenable to meeting with local residents and hearing our input to physical design appearance of the apartment buildings and surrounding landscapes? The current hillside landscape east and south consists of mature native trees and shrubs providing a sanctuary for local wildlife. Will the developer consider excluding a portion of these areas from grading to street level? And lastly, how will the city handle the anticipated increased traffic flow for site renters, delivery vehicles, trash collection, fire and emergency accessibility, along with safe egress for over 90 residents and other related vehicles? These are matters to be seriously considered. What I haven't discussed is the history and cultural impact this will have to the area. But I think previous residents have discussed those issues. Thank you again for your time, and we encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to give serious thought to these and other related issues concerning this proposed development before giving your final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nancy Beats.
Hi, my name is Nancy Beats. I own the property at 443...
Could you, excuse me, ma'am, need to lower the mic a little more and speak into it?
443 South Marina Street. And I also own the triplex over at 510 South Cortez, which is just directly west of the proposed site. I just wanted to thank all the neighbors with their caring hearts and all the comments of truth and reality, because, like I mentioned yesterday, when I went to planning and zoning, we all need to be better stewards. Every department, every citizen, we just need to be better stewards moving forward. And again, speaking the truth and the reality in this situation, I can't say it any better than those that have come before me. But my heart is the disregard that led to the disrepair of that building, because I'm a preserve-and-protect type of person. And so the history of Prescott is what we see. And for those that don't know, that building was the Jefferson Elementary School in 1923. And then Elizabeth Ruffner decided in 1943 that we needed our first community hospital. So she organized... Let me get my glasses on, sorry. Jefferson School was built in 1923. It closed in 1938. One of Prescott's hometown icons, Elizabeth Ruffner, wanted to ensure the availability of healthcare in our community. She helped draft a document that launched Prescott Community Hospital Association. The nonprofit then purchased Jefferson School for $1,000 and turned it into a hospital with donations. It was later added on to, and pretty much is what we see today. So somebody looking at that building will just look at a building. But when you hear the story, that's part of Prescott, is the story and how we've grown. So I don't think that we would be here today. The other part of this is, I don't think that we would be here today if the building had been maintained. And it's just been sitting there since 2012. I did call about purchasing that building back when, when planning and zoning left to go to Seligman, but it was then leased to the Wishman movie production, which I had a small little role, but that's another story. But after that, we've just watched the decline, and we keep hearing about the mold. Why isn't ownership... My feeder held to the fire on Marina. I have a back-two-level apartment. I had to make sure that there was no street parking, or it was not going to be allowed. Full-time living in the back apartment was not going to be allowed unless I turned basically my front yard into a parking lot. I had to ensure off-street parking. So this project, with not having the correct number of parking spaces allowed for, you know, what I'm trying to say is, it would bring that project into the neighborhood, and then our deliveries, our guests, will now be catering to the apartment complex encroaching on the bungalows that currently exist. And when you look at the rezoning picture, what do you see? You see high-end homes. We've got the high-end homes on the ridge, and then we've got our bungalows, our historic bungalows. I thought that mine was in 1940, but I think now it's 1920s, because my neighbor across the street, when he was remodeling, the newspapers are from the 1920s. We really need to be guardians. And this project with asphalt and the coldness of the project does not integrate with the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I believe it's Laura Beats.
Hi, my name's Laura Beats, and I'm at 512 South Cortez, and I might be a little loud, but that's my voice. I also own another property that's around Prescott. And it's very disheartening to see what's happening to Prescott. Prescott looks like it's becoming Phoenix, which I left Phoenix to come up here to get away with. So my question, number one, to you guys, would you be happy living next to a bunch of buildings and a bunch of apartments that don't, your roads right now, our roads right now cannot accommodate the traffic as it is? I concur, and thank you, everyone who showed up and has come up to speak about this, because this looks like Prescott is becoming a little Phoenix. When does it stop? What is Phoenix? What is Prescott? Prescott is a historical town that people come up to enjoy. How can people come up to enjoy, with all the lovely events, everything that comes around the courthouse, when there's no place to park? Where are people parking right now? They are parking in the residential areas, up and down all the streets. The traffic is horrific. I love people to come up to Prescott. I enjoy Prescott. I enjoy the people. I enjoy the hometown feeling. This is not happening anymore. Could someone explain to me what is happening to Prescott right now? Somebody from this board, please explain it to me. I would love to know. No one can explain to me what's happening to Prescott. This is a very sad time, a very sad time. People, the majority of the people that come up here are to what? To retire. How can you retire when this is looking like Phoenix? Okay? Very disheartening. It is very disheartening, too, because I love that old schoolhouse. Prescott could have preserved it. It could have turned it into something really sweet that people could have come up and enjoy, and it did not. It did not. What is the historical places? This whole town is historical, and you're destroying it by letting people come in and making it a little Phoenix. It's very disheartening and very discouraging. And I can't believe that more notice for the town individuals are not up here to be able to speak, because notices are not given out. And the question to you is, why not? You need to take regard into more that's happening into this town, because this town will no longer be a town of enjoyment. It will no longer be a town of history. The historical society should be more around here and saving what is already. So I thank you for your time, and I applaud, deep-heartedly, for everybody that's come up to speak about Prescott, because it needs to be saved. And I hope in the future, right now, that you make a better decision on what you're doing right now, choose just that one street, but you make an even better decision what you do that happens all around this little town, or it won't be a little town, it'll be Phoenix. And no one's going to want to come here. No one. Believe me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicole Kennedy.
Hello, committee. Nicole Kennedy, 372 Verde. I am currently serving on the city's Workforce Housing Committee, so I've had a chance to share with you all about some of our plans as a committee. But I just want to speak from a personal standpoint. I'm personally an Arizona native. I've lived in Prescott for a very long time, and I'm raising my son here. And I understand there's a lot of fears around the unknown. I totally get that. One of my personal fears is that we're not going to have enough housing, enough attainable housing, for the young generation and the generation after that and the generation after that. We absolutely have a housing shortage. I'm grateful for projects that have a higher density, because we don't really need the urban sprawl. We don't want to be increasing traffic by having to drive further to get to services. So personally, I'm applauding this as a potential solution to some of the issues that we're facing as a community. We need housing for our teachers, for our nurses, for our construction workers, for the very people that make this community a thriving community. I'm curious to see the elevation plans, and I know that we haven't seen those yet. From what I can tell, from what I'm seeing, it looks like the majority of what you are seeing from the streets are the apartments themselves, the buildings themselves. And I see trees there, which is great. So it looks like we're not going to be seeing a lot of parking lot. It seems like it was thoughtfully designed. So I'm curious to see how that unfolds. And I also do want to share, somebody was talking earlier about values. And something that's really important to us as a committee is to start educating the community on the truth about decreasing values in regards to more development, especially higher-density development. There is a plethora of research out there, and I'd be happy to share it with anybody here, if you're curious. Decades' worth of research that shows it is not the type of housing that is built, it's not even the density of housing that's built. It will not negatively impact values. It's really about the quality of the design and about the maintenance of the properties themselves. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marty Veriver.
Good morning. I'm Marty Verrier from 559 Wilderness Point. And I am here, and I'm going to be sharing a letter from our entire community of Summit Point. And it was, I believe, me... And it was, I believe, mailed to you, but I would like to re, share it with you. And this is what it states. "We are the elected officers and directors of the above-titled Homeowners Association, SPOA Summit Point Association, that govern, govern, phew, excuse me, that governs Summit Point by Crystal Creek, a planned area development that borders the proposed project immediately to the south. As elected representatives of the property, immediate owners and members of the Summit Point Owners Association, we therefore are providing official comments on the above-mentioned proposed rezoning and development. We ask that a copy of this letter be provided to each of you, the planning and zoning commissioners, prior to the meeting, so that, and it is also made part of the official record of the proceedings. This project abuts the northern boundary of Summit Point by Crystal Creek, a planned area development of 62 lots restricted to single-family dwellings. SPOA owner owns parcels, among others, 109-16-018A and 019A, which together contains a utility and pedestrian ingress, egress easement from Wilderness Point to the southern terminus of Marina Street, allowing our residents pedestrian access to downtown. In addition to our residents, this easement pathway is also commonly used by the more physically fit residents of the Summit Point Estates and Tenny Ranch Developments across the highway. Also in addition, parcel 10916019B in our development has a driveway that, sorry, that allows access to an RV garage and the property from Marina Street. For these reasons, we are opposed to the abandonment of Marina Street, which could preclude unrestricted access to our development. The May 9 meeting indicated this was the city's desire simply to improve water and infrastructure looping and not that of the developers. Regardless of the idea's origin, we are strongly and unalterably opposed to any change in the status of Marina Street as a city right of way. Secondly, as other critics have mentioned, this project will dramatically change the character of Marina Street neighborhood. Mrs. DeWitt, DeWitt, I believe it is, in her testimony repeatedly emphasized that the majority of the area of the proposed project has been zoned for high-density multifamily use for at least the last 60 years. Our response to that is, so what? Prescott has seen a lot of changes in the last 60 years, and there is no reason to assign particular value to a precedent whose original basis is lost in time. We refer you to section 6.1.12 of the general plan of 2015, which we excerpt here. Growth regulations, cultural natural resource management, historic districts, and neighborhood preservation are established practices here. In all cases, the community will accept that new development be sensitive and compatible with existing development. In our opinion, and from the majority of comments presented to the commission previously, this proposed development is completely incompatible with existing development. Also with reference to compatibility with the existing neighborhood during this testimony before the commission on May 9, the project's architect, Mr. Taylor, admitted that the apartments assigned for use by seniors were included solely to justify the provision of fewer parking spaces that would be required if all 90 units did not include such a provision. We interpreted this testimony to mean that the project was designed to maximize its density and the number of units with the provisions of adequate parking as an afterthought. And if the adequate parking was an afterthought, we wonder when neighborhood compatibility was considered, if at all. Further, with regard to parking and traffic, we assume that there can be and will be no attempt made by management of these apartments, should they be built, to rent some number of units only to seniors, which means the project is being designed with inadequate, though compliant, parking. Our fear is that overflow parking will spread to Marina and surrounding streets, which do not have the capacity to absorb such. Lastly, with regard to parking, the Land Development Code, Section 3.10.4A, states, "If practical, parking should be provided at the rear of buildings. This proposed design does not exhibit an attempt to comply." We have three other comments. First, the site plan presented during the meeting of May 9 is completely inadequate in that it does not show the surrounding areas of the proposed project, including other nearby structures and their proximity, nor are the boundaries of the project adequately labeled as far as we can determine. Secondly, we realize that a traffic impact analysis is unnecessary for the rezoning, but it will be required for approval of the project, and it would be very helpful if it were available during the rezoning consideration. Lastly, toward the end of the meeting, Commissioner Young mused aloud about the possibility of doing this project as a planned area development. We recognize that the commission has no authority to demand such a change from the owner developer, but also observe that this suggestion, were the owner to agree, would certainly trigger far less opposition from neighbors and other concerned citizens. We therefore encourage all parties to explore the possibility, respectfully submitted by the Board of Summit Point Association. Al Sargent, our president, Sam Norotaki, our secretary, Charles Thomas, our treasurer, Jim Obstic, our vice president, and Jay Loden, Director at Large. Thank you and appreciate having this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all.
Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Thank you, Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Commission.
You need to move, yeah, there you go.
I just want to reiterate the fact that without this rezoning, the 90 apartment units are allowed by right, regardless of how you split up the property. This rezoning is only a benefit to the surrounding area, because it allows us to push these apartment units out. It allows us to lower the height of the buildings and make them more compatible with the neighborhood by not doing any flat roofs or three-story structures. I empathize with the idea that, that a lot of people don't want apartment units next to their single-family homes. However, it's an abandoned building. A horror movie was filmed here. So what's it doing now? So anyway, I just wanted to emphasize that point, and if anybody in the community feels like they weren't reached out to adequately, we get these opposition letters, but the contact information is blacked out. So I will be here after the meeting with business cards. My phone number and email are on them, so please feel free to take one and reach out to us directly. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sir, I would encourage, you know, having meetings with the neighborhood and maybe fleshing out what your plans are there. I am disappointed that the owner of the property did not attend the meeting. I would highly recommend that no matter what we vote on here, that they attend the city council meeting. You know, this is what they want. They should be here to answer questions or give information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'm not chastising you. I just want you to pass that on, please.
Understood. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any comments from commission members or questions? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a great opportunity for some education here. A lot of the things, a lot of the very heartfelt issues that the neighborhood has brought up is not something that goes unheard. It's simply something we don't have the authority or the ability to be able to deal with. One of the things that we're doing here right now is we're looking at the rezoning of three very small parcels in order to be able to achieve something with the units that are already allowed there, to achieve something in making them a little bit shorter and perhaps a little bit more assimilated into the heights of the buildings in, in the, in the community itself. The site plan is not in our purview to review. The utilities are not in our purview to review, but we have stated that they are going to be taken care of, they are going to be looked at as part of the future process as this thing, as this project moves along, if it does. The design of the buildings, you're not going to spend a whole bunch of time designing the buildings unless you have the right to build them, you know? And you can build all of these. You don't know if you're going to do two stories or three stories until the zoning issue is resolved. So until then, I think that it's, we can't talk about the design. We can talk about it, but we don't have in our purview the ability to be able to review architectural design as part of this particular project. And as far as the historic building is concerned, I've been an architect for a long time and a contractor as well, and I have gone through that with county supervisors on multiple occasions, and I will tell you, the building is not structurally sound, and it would be far more extensive and expensive to try to rebuild that building, if it in fact could even be rebuilt, in order to be able to keep it and restore it. There's a lot of work that's been done on that building over the years, and as stated earlier, the State Historic Preservation Office has flat-out said it's not a candidate for historic preservation or for historic listing. So given all that information, I mean, I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of feeling that is going on here, and, you know, issues about Prescott growing or not growing is, again, not what we're here to talk about right now, and it's not in our, it's not on our agenda. But what is on our agenda, though, is whether or not, basically, the 90 units that is going to be built here, is it going to be two stories or three stories? I mean, that's what it comes down to. If we vote no on the rezoning, it's going to be three stories. If we vote yes, it has the ability to be down to two stories. So I'll just leave it at that and see if anybody else, any other commissions.
Anyone else?
Well, I would like some clarification on the three parcels, or the three parcels, it's equalling the .06 for the rezoning.
Yes, they're .2, they're .2 acres each, so three parcels is .6 acres.
Okay, so what we already know is approximately 2.6, 2.7 acres of this project is already approved for high-density, and we don't have the ability to change that without the owner's permission. And if that's the case, based on up to 32 units per acre, they could pretty much, if we don't give this change on .6 acres, something like 87 or 86 units could already be built without coming to us. Is that correct?
They'd be allowed the 90 units without this rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? We have two items we're looking at here. One is a minor change to the general plan, and the other one is a rezoning. We are going to be treating each one separately, and I want to remind everybody, no matter what we vote on here, or how we vote, this is a recommendation only to the city council. And if it goes forward to the city council, you can attend the city council and present your thoughts to the city council, too. So this is not the final action on this, okay? Is there a motion concerning the general plan?
Mr. -
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of GPA 24-001.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Susan Graham, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Sarah?
Chair Michaelman.
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley.
Approve.
Member Graham.
Approve.
Member Kloszewski.
Approve.
Passes 4-0.
Next is the motion concerning the rezoning of the property. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Tom?
I move to recommend approval of REZ 24-003, subject to substantial conformance with the site plan.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Susan Graham, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sarah?
Chair Michaelman.
Approve.
Vice Chair Riley.
Approve.
Member Graham.
Approve.
And Member Kloszewski.
Approve.
Passes 4-0.
Any updates?
No, sir.
The meeting is adjourned.